Improve the agenda with the addition of the strategic plan under our workshop.
So.
Uh, moved by Michelle Felter.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Gilmann instead. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent comments?
Um, so for the most part here, we'll just go through, uh, items that we got during the workshop. So the first one, the Jefferson Building RFP, we got that sent out. We got the information that's been out in the advertising. I hand-delivered a copy to the city, um, work authority. Um, I'll follow up with them again later on this week. Right now, the only thing that's coming up here in the next while is June eighteenth, I think it is. At eight AM, there's gonna be a, um, site visit for anybody who wishes to inspect the facility and go from there. So, right now, we're just kind of in the waiting game. We know how, oh, go ahead.
Do people let you know if they're interested in being there on the, at eight AM?
We're gonna be there. They can just show up and we'll go from there. I haven't had any inquiries at this point.
Who's read? Like you and?
Um, I'm gonna be there for a while, but Alan Gayler's gonna be there for the primaries. I got another meeting at nine. So I'll be there at eight, hopefully.
Is there gonna be, I'm sure the, how is this gonna be advertised out? Are they gonna put it on the school's website or is that or on social?
Well, it's on the, it has to be advertised in the paper, which it is, and then Anne will make sure that it's all there on the, she's already put some stuff all there, I think, on, on Facebook. Not sure.
I haven't seen.
I haven't seen.
Okay, I'll double check on that. I thought you told me that you have it, so. Alright, that seems like that's covered. Uh, legislative, legislative session followed up. So on this, um, special session that's currently in order, um, supposed to be done by seven o'clock tomorrow morning. Because there's always some negotiations that end up happening in a special session. I don't have any particular information that I can share at this time. Um, the one thing that I'm hopeful about is that the compensatory funding, that we were looking to lose about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in compensation funding this year. So there is a provision in the bill that I've seen according to the improved finance targets. Uh, I don't know if we're gonna be held completely harmless or if there's gonna be some measure of tailing in there. So, that's probably the biggest one right now. Um, we'll just have to wait and see. And then the mascot legislation that was included in both the House and the Senate omnibus policy bills. So basically with that, what we would be able to do is work with Prairie Island Indian community and our, um, they had AIPAC. In order to, uh, approve what we need to do. So, right now, we're just kinda waiting to see. Any inkling on what that may be, what we need to do to? Just coordinate with them, make sure that we have permission to, you know, give what we have or whatever.
That's respectful.
Yeah, that's, that's been the intent all the way along was not, you know, Prairie Island never wanted any of this to happen. They never wanted, they, they never came to the school with a complaint or anything. They have always been a hundred percent in support. So this was legislation that impacted Prairie Island in a negative manner, uh, through none of their doing. So once, and I should be able to get something out to you on it by the end of the week as far as a written summary of what's going on or what's taking place. Right now, like I say, there's still meetings, so. Not much out here.
Unfortunately, the governor's only position is to, uh, order a special session, so legislators, legislative decision to how long it actually is.
Right.
So like, he can say be done by seven AM tomorrow, it could go for three weeks.
It could, it could. And I, I don't know, I mean, uh.
You hope not. You're right, who's gonna spend, it's just spending money then.
So we'll see. They must have some kind of framework in place, so.
The, the loss or potential loss of compensatory funding, that's just a government cut or is that?
Yeah, no, what it is is, so, again, this was when the compensatory funding formula changed. So that the only part that feeds into that is the direct certifications. That's when we saw a decrease, we, according to the runs that we would have, we would see a decrease in the amount of compensatory funding that we're receiving. They're gonna hold us a lot of, I haven't, again, seen the full language, but they will hold us at the prior level for one more year. And then they're, they've got a, um, some sort of task force that they're putting together to study the compensatory revenue system.
When we get the final details on that, on the, assuming that this is a piece on what the finance committee can kind of look through and, and go through and maybe have a, we can have a workshop on, on, and have a finance workshop and get to the, yeah, so I think that'd be, hopefully, if it's a, well, it's.
Well, at least for one year, we're gonna see, although if not, we really don't know.
Alright. Uh, now with that, we go to financial, the finance updates.
Okay, so with the finance updates, a couple pieces here that are gonna impact. There's a sheet that just the board members have, uh, one pager that Lisa provided me. Unfortunately, Lisa cannot be here today, she's taking a little bit of fun to herself, and vacation, she'll be back on Wednesday. But, the main number that we gotta look at there is Fund One, so right up at the top there. And on that Fund One, it shows a five hundred and one thousand dollar deficit. So after making the reductions that we made, right now, that five hundred and one thousand dollars, that's basically what we would be looking at as a deficit for next year. So that would be essentially the fund balance ask. Okay, that's how much fund balance we would use now. That number changed.
Fund balance ask for this year?
For this year.
Okay.
For, for FY twenty-five, for next year.
Okay. The next school year.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, now, you'll notice that the numbers at the bottom and whatever, those are bigger. But all of those other funds, they have received the revenue, it's just that we had to end up with expenditure. So the one that we worry about primarily, there's Fund One. Okay, and there's gonna be some changes to this. There was a change that we discovered today that is going to actually make this number closer to five hundred and eighty thousand, probably. Um, and what ended up happening was we were going through some staffing things, primarily at the middle school. And we had a miscalculation with the number of students that we were gonna have in our sixth grade or seventh grade.
Six, seven, ELA, both.
We were gonna end up with, uh, class sections in ELA and most of thirty-six kids, and that was not, that was not working. Um, so, uh, what I informed Mr. Bierman today is we have to add another teacher there. That's still gonna keep those class sizes at about twenty-eight or twenty-nine, uh, which is still plenty large for thirty-six, it's just not natural. So. So we're still less than six hundred thousand dollars in fund balance that we would be asking for. We'll have the, uh, we'll have the budget ready for the June board meeting, because we have to have that approved at that time. Uh, Lisa had a lot of work on this before she left, and we'll be fine tuning here in the next week or so. But let's put that budget roughly, so this is not a final document yet, that's roughly what we're gonna do.
And that's out of the up to a million dollars that we previously?
Yeah. So Lisa was able to find some additional, she did some jockey and were able to figure out some additional savings. So instead of that million that we were talking about, now it's six hundred thousand.
And that includes the teacher?
Just trying to go back to previous meetings, I thought there was a discussion that we'd be using fund balance for the next fiscal year.
It is.
But this is as a five thirty, oh, five twenty-six budget, okay. So this year's budget.
Projection.
This year's budget projection, we should have surplus. That's what, okay, I just wanna make sure we're covering the same thing, 'cause we're talking as of five thirty, but then it's for fiscal year twenty-six, that is what I heard.
Yes.
Not fiscal year twenty-five, for that was stated.
Yep, so this is basically a preliminary to the proposed budget that we'll have for you at the end of the month. So right now, according to what we had, we were gonna have about a five hundred thousand dollar surplus in the current fiscal year. And then roughly five or six hundred thousand dollars in deficit next year, for the kind of cost set up. Plus the entire goal of.
And we have, when we know, what are the final smoothie numbers in for FY twenty-six?
FY twenty-six?
Twenty-five.
Fair enough.
Twenty-five, I thought it was twenty-five.
Um, those, the final, final numbers, it's weird, we don't get those probably until fall, but I can get a pretty good, um, part, part of the difficulty ends up in, so the kid is here, um, from September until December, okay? That number of days is pro-rated, so instead of a one point oh, it would be a point four, or whatever that is. So you gotta add up all the point fours and the point sevens and the points, whatever. So that's why you don't end up with that final number.
But we, we, we know probably right now.
We're pretty, yeah, we're reasonably close.
One to your class value here.
Uh, it's probably a little more variable than that, but, yeah.
Yep.
So, um, so anyway, that, again, that's just a rough sketch here. Again, Lisa and I will be going through this, we'll have this available for the preliminary budget that has to be passed before July first.
Is the fund balance four, is that the OPEC?
OPEC.
OPEC.
Well, Fund Four is, is that my saying?
No, right, debt service.
Yeah, yeah, what's that? Fund Four is debt service.
Yeah. What, am I pronouncing that?
OPEC?
OPEC.
Yep. That's forty-five.
Forty-five.
Okay, and then, um, kind of does a follow-up for some of the stuff that I talked about before, um, having a finance committee get going on that. So, there's a lot of different ways the finance committees end up looking across the state. Uh, some of them are relatively small, where you have superintendent, business manager, and a couple of board members. Others are more expansive than that. Uh, I did some checking with schools in the region to kind of see what theirs end up looking like. So, um, in my comments there, this was the one that seemed like kind of a middle ground. Um, so roughly, I mean, quarterly, committee would be made up of superintendent, business manager, the principals, two board members. And a lot of the schools, they also ask for, um, two members of the community at large that could be asked by the school board. Okay, um, so, then when we end up meeting, most of the time, so like we would have had a discussion, uh, prior to this, to the budget meeting coming up here, so that people have a good understanding of what that would end up looking like. And then as we go forward, it does what we're looking to do, and I'll talk about this just a little bit more coming up. But we're gonna be doing some restructuring of things, what are the costs, what are the savings, what are the impact? So that would be run through the finance committee first, before that gets brought to the board as a whole. Um, so the quarterly, it was kind of in normal terms this time. You know, we've got some work that has to be done, and it's gonna have to get done pretty quickly. We might need to have those on a monthly basis for a while, in order to kind of get up to speed. So, that was, that is my suggestion, and I'm open to thoughts.
Do you have an issue for number ninety-nine?
Kayla and.
And then that committee is not, uh, you don't make decisions.
No, there is because.
As an advisor.
Right, yep.
Recommendations.
Yeah.
And I saw you had, and who, who would pick that as a group, as a, as a, the committee would pick that at large?
Don't have to have the members at large, in some school districts, they consider the school board members who are on to be representatives of the community. Um, but that was just a suggestion, I didn't think it was a bad idea, so.
I would think, maybe it would be that if we got ourselves organized first and functioned before we bring community members into this.
No, I think it's probably a good idea to bring them in right off the get-go.
Okay.
I mean, there's, it just comes down to, um, who you wanna invite in. Now, it does not have to be, um, you know, a financial professional or anything like that. Uh, it could be a, you know, it could be a single mom who's gonna have input in what things wanna look like. You know, so there's a lot of different variables on what that could be. So, I don't have any particular individuals in mind, so it might be a deal where the board members wanna nominate a few people. And then amongst the board, kind of figure out who that should be. So.
That's the part that sounds a little uncomfortable to me, is just identifying two people to be part of it.
Yep. It all happens.
I think some of those discussions too might be, um, you know, or, let's see, uh, just not necessarily everything that would be brought to a board level necessarily. I don't know if just randomly selecting two people to be a part of that is, you know, a good idea.
I'm okay either way, that was a, the way some districts have done it.
I think, I like the idea because we're looking at trying to do things differently here, you know, how education's gonna look in the next five to ten years, where our enrollment's going. Getting some input from some couple selected, um, community members would, I think, bring some, uh, credibility to the.
Well, and there's, and, and it could be, it doesn't even have to be the same people each time, you know? You could have, so let's say that we're looking at our student population, or, well, maybe to bring in a realtor who ends up, you know, they understand the housing market, they kind of see what ends up, 'cause the housing market impacts us. So, that would just be an idea.
Yeah, I think it's, we want the community involved, we want the community to be part of, school be part of the community, I think. It's unfair to ask the community to be part of the school.
And transparency, we're trying to really be more transparent and provide that to be able to ask questions and stuff, I think. That's one good idea. It's just gonna come down to how are you selecting those people? Who's selecting them and how are they being selected?
There may be people. Well, I, I made it right, but.
Nope, that's my only.
I say, there may be people that want to, too.
Well, there may, but again, there might be a lot of people wanting to.
Right.
Okay, so then, you know, also, do you end up, you bring, maybe each board member brings two names? Okay, we don't have any, whatever, it's also gonna happen here on. I mean, there's lots of different ways that you could do that.
Because if we're not, we're not necessarily, as you said, we don't necessarily are interested in finding someone with financial equity, we have our experts in that area. But people who care, and therefore throwing the things in the hat and calling out two names, that's.
You know, so for example, one of the things that we'll be talking about in the finance committee meeting is we've got an RFP that's gonna be coming up for our bus service.
Yeah.
Okay, bus service is kind of a big deal in Red Wing. And it's been, we've had our challenges, thankfully, it got a lot better as the year went on. But, you know, we have a parent or two that wishes to have input, you know, I mean, and again, they can provide their input, that's part of the committee that comes back to the board.
And it would be, I think, in a situation like that, it might be important for two parents to have someone who is a rural resident in town in front of the town, because those experiences, I know, Rachel, you're like borderline rural, but those experiences are very different than the kids who get on buses, you know?
So anyway, that's a, that's a suggestion, so if you'd like, uh, the first time that we meet, we can discuss that further, otherwise, maybe you wanna bring names.
Yeah, bring names first, then, see what happens.
If you want the names, why? Um, well, I guess first thing we gotta figure out when we're gonna meet first.
That might influence whether or not someone's interested in.
Yeah, yep. So, um, well, Kayla and Teresa and yours, the people that are on that, we can certainly, we can try to set one up between now and the first and the regular board meeting if you like, so that way we can go over the budget with you before we bring into a full board, otherwise, that's way too long.
I'm, I'm the only day I can't do this, but.
Alright, answer.
Any free? Although I probably, you know, I could ramble with the food pills, but it's not gonna be.
Tell you what, I don't hide, I'll work with Kayla and Teresa and we'll get that put together.
It'd be good, probably be quite a bit for the community members to come in and try to, yeah, get the budget done for the next fiscal year.
Yep.
So getting the, the framework and the, massaging it, and then going forward in July or August when they're gonna meet.
Then the other person that I think is important to have on, that I didn't have listed in there, but it's Emily, that's directly teaching learning. So, I'd like her to be part of that as well.
I would also ask that, um, our standing board agenda, um, for board meetings has a finance committee update on it, has a standing agenda in them.
I think that's part of the committees.
Well, that's part of the committee update, anytime there's been a meeting, we're gonna update. I don't know that we've all been doing that, but that's what we've been doing, so we're using on a meeting, that's the time to get updated.
Yeah, absolutely correct. Okay, so the, uh, anything else about board meetings time meeting? We'll do a better job of that, both of us.
Um, board retreat dates. I don't know what the folks have in mind with that, do you have any, you talked about that one week, fourteen through the eighteen?
We have the fourteenth of the eighteenth, what month?
July?
July.
Fourteenth through the eighteen?
Yep. So what time of the day are they thinking?
Up to you guys, and all I can do Thursday, the seventeenth. Afternoon's work for me except for the sixteenth. Is there a time frame, morning, afternoon, evenings?
What, how long are you looking at ten days?
I don't remember what, it was last year, it was probably a couple hours.
Well, we worked, didn't, we, we did something at the admin team.
That was, was that last year or the summer before?
Well, that was last.
Full of summer, oh, yeah.
So, I think we met. Yeah, and then met again with just board and, uh.
The same day or?
Same day, yeah.
Okay.
And then I think.
We were at the bar meeting?
No, but we were at the bar three years ago.
Once we were here.
Yeah, last year we were here. About three o'clock and the fourteenth.
Did we have a board meeting that same?
No.
No, 'cause we don't have a board meeting until coming.
Just one in July.
Okay.
You can do it later if you want, I just do three o'clock, so you don't have to be out here all night. By the Friday night, we'll do that, too.
No, thanks.
You gotta fish right into it.
Do you have a question? I can do the fourteenth.
Okay, well, that went true.
Yeah.
So, three o'clock is okay? Alright, so, uh, July fourteenth. Three o'clock. And with that, so we'll have some, um, reports from admin and from their buildings, to be able to give you an update on what things that they are, uh, working on is, you know, by that time, school's gonna be right around the corner again, so things that they're gonna be looking at, what their buildings look like, any of that kind of stuff. And then, uh, I would like to be able to use a pretty good chunk of the rest of that time looking at kind of a reorganization of schools. So is that workable?
Is the idea that this reorganization would possibly take place in twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Yep. That's kind of what our, we talked today, we had an admin retreat we were talking about, um, so yeah, something, just to kind of toss it out there right now. The thing that we were, so there's a couple pieces that are goals of, one is right now, our far too few of our, uh, kids coming into kindergarten are, uh, prepared. So it's only about forty percent that are considered ready for kindergarten, we need to increase that number if we're gonna lift up our academics all the way across the board. So, one of the big goals, this is gonna take an investment at some point from the school district, is to be able to offer a preschool for all of our four-year-olds. Okay, in doing that, because we have excess space here at the high school, because the building was built for a lot more kids than they have at this point, the recommendation would be to take the kids who are at Cawville at P-four, put them out at Sunnyside with the kindergarten. So P-fours and kindergartens will be at Sunnyside, and then every other grade would move up. So Burnside then would become grades one through three. The middle school would become essentially an upper elementary in the form of grades four through six. And the high school would be grades seven through twelve. Uh, one of the things with the high school, we would end up having two separate bell schedules and different things like that, because, um, essentially we would have a seventh, eighth grade wing or area, and then nine through twelve. And I think there's opportunity for us to have some significant savings in our teaching staffs just by what we can do on the licensure. And I think ultimately, we can end up with, um, some better academics across the board. So, there's some work to be done there, but I think there's advantages to it.
And we talked about during the retreat, the the bus, busing, you know? RFP then, or what, what we would look at, what the finance committee would look at prior to that or something?
Yeah, we would do that as well.
Because that's a big issue, that's a ten-year, basically a ten-year contract coming forward.
Yep.
So. Is that, is that contract public knowledge, would that be sent out?
Yeah.
The, the current busing one? Or is that, is that, uh, public?
It's, yeah, it's public, it's a school district contract, so it's public, okay, yep.
And it's expiring. This is our last year on that contract, so we have to. We have to put it out, we don't have a choice.
And we wanna get that out in August, because we wanna end up having a decision made on last year, or in October, or November. So.
In August?
Yes. And there's a, there's a guy that I've been visiting, but he's done a lot of work with transportation contracts. Um, he's done some work, uh, on the bidding process, so I'm seeking some info from him. Trying to end up with a way that we can tailor our RFP to fit Red Wing. Hopefully end up getting a better, better deal. So we're gonna.
We're gonna probably touch as, as we go forward with that, touch base on possible independent ownership of buses too.
We can talk about all of it.
Yeah.
Yep. I mean, there's lots of different ways that things have been done in school districts across the state, across time. Some bus, some districts entirely own their own buses. Some districts have somewhere else that are, um, owned by the district and others that are contracted out. Others are fully contracted. So lots of different ways you can do it. Right now, how is, how is ours? Is every student, can every student be on a route if they want to? Yes, they all have to be involved. So they're all involved, even though there's a pretty significant number of kids who never ride the bus. Take where they go.
And I correct if I'm wrong, but there are some schools that have a, let's just say, a, a radius around the school.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't care.
Yeah, they have walk zones. Every kid, every kid who's outside of the walk. Yeah, they live outside the walk zone area, then they're out there. Yeah.
All right.
All right. Any more on board retreat dates or topics?
And if you've got something else that you'd like to add to the board retreat, I mean, we've got time here, so. If you've got an idea of something you'd like to have more information on, then let me know and we'll be very clear.
As part of the reorganization, would you include some of the ideas you're talking about, you've been talking about with AI?
Yep.
So that would be a part of that?
Yep. Yep, so, um, yeah, a lot of stuff, again, a lot of unknowns, but, um, it's exciting and scary, but what we want to do is we gotta be looking forward to what things can and should look like on the road. And we're gonna get some of it right, and we might guess wrong, but we gotta be working at it.
You're gonna find, uh, community members are gonna be afraid of going seven twelve again because of what they're like that during COVID.
Yep.
And I know they're planning on starting a different new house grid, but it was, it was a rough experience for a lot of kids.
Yep, and we want to make sure that's not the case. I mean, in a lot of ways, um, again, my background is high schools are seven twelve, and well, that's the way that's always, I've always seen that. Um, I think there's some, I think there's quite a bit of value in it. I think there's, again, you gotta make sure that people are standing in their lanes and the kids are behaving and the things that they're supposed to do. I think there's, there could be some.
How would that look if we have an uptick in the, in the, where?
We're still, we're still in good shape.
Okay, so even if, I mean, significantly, we'd be fine having the seven through twelve here.
Yep.
If we were, when this school was built, I think it was built for 250.
The old or 1,500?
Okay, so you can hide it.
Built for 1,500. There's 1,200 lockers here, and right now we've got 720 kids. They're using lockers only, or is that the best number of kids? That's the number of lockers that use backpacks and all that. They don't sort of, so we may have more than 700 some kids. No, I mean, in the high school right now, we've got 700, I think it was 727.
Okay, but that, okay, I heard you say something about lockers. I just don't want to be, 700 kids are using lockers, but we might have 800, I'm just saying.
Oh, there's 1,200 lockers available.
Okay.
It was just brought up for how, how big, just when the school was built, how many students it was designed for.
Yep, okay.
I think with any transition that we make, how it is organized by our, in our administration.
Yeah, there's.
That's what's going to make it. And I think, I feel like right now with how we are set up, every single building from Cawall all the way to the high school does an outstanding job of, um, helping kids feel comfortable with that transition before they make it. It's seamless. So I think.
Yeah, that's, and this, again, anytime there's change, it's always hard, you know, this is the way it's been, you know, why are we doing this? Um, but, and you said, we get a slick word down time.
After the, and how would that look? Obviously, we discussed this before, but we'd have probably several community engagement meetings after, you know, before this went to, to here all.
Yep. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of work.
Yeah.
And we're already working together, just so you're all aware. Like, I shared my current schedule and proposed schedule with the high school to start looking at what seven and eight on a separate bell schedule would look like to try and limit that exposure. So there's thought going forward already, and we plan on working hand in hand together to make sure that it's the best experience for all.
That's great. Just like we did when we moved to grade level centers and then fifth grade up to the 11th grade. Every time we've changed something, our staff has done a great job of making it a good situation for kids.
Thank you, Patrick Cooper. All right, uh, any other, any other discussion on board retreat? All right.
That typically, those typically are not live streamed or recorded.
No.
But they are still open to the public.
Yep.
So transparency, it's always been like that, um, just so people know.
All right. Thank you.
Strategic plan. So the strategic plan is probably at least a part of the, uh, consideration that we have with the retreat as well. So with the strategic plan, there's many different ways that a strategic plan can be built. Um, you can go a very, very expensive route, and you can bring in a consultant that ends up walking you through the entire process. That can cost a significant amount. Um, typically, uh, with a strategic plan, you're gonna have three or four kind of main pillars that you're going to kind of hang your hat. Those are the main things that you end up. So it could be something, you know, might be with academics, might be something with, um, career readiness, uh, could be something with as simple as student attendance, okay? Different pieces. Or it might be that we, uh, part of the strategic plan over five years, we have, um, you know, a higher percentage of students entering kindergarten who are ready for school. Okay, something along those. There's lots of different ways that we can do that. Then the detailed pieces are going to tie to a lot of the work that we already do. So like, for example, Emily does a lot of work with, what's your actor name? I know what your actor.
Oh, the CACR.
The CACR, I hate that.
It's new. That would've been way in the fall, so the World's Best Workforce got replaced by the Comprehensive Achievement Civic Readiness. And if you look at a lot of districts, they'll have their, uh, strategic plan, they'll have like their four directions or pillars or whatever. And if you look at a lot of your steps under that, come out of the CACR, the local literacy plan, all these things we already do. We've seen them much in a more community way, if that makes sense as well. But there are these different pieces that already exist within the system that are required every year from MGE as well. Um, and you could build off like, it's the yearly CACR, you could build that, be like, what does this look like five years out? Because we have to stick within these five areas of the CACR. Weird accent, you guys. Um, and then you plan out, what does that look like? And follow data science as well, because there's a science of like, how many percentage points can you actually achieve in a year? And different things like that if you're doing a smart poll. And so there are pieces of that that exist. Um, I'm happy to share with you some really great examples I found of other districts in Minnesota too, of how they do layout their plans as well. Um, and different pieces is also the time that you really look at your mission, your vision, your core values, your pillars, that's all of that at one time. And then you get to like that finite, like it all falls under here. So a lot of them have high quality teaching learning. What does that look like? Where are we putting our efforts? We talk about literacy. We need to put our efforts, our money, our people into literacy. That's an example, right? So it's a process as well. And as Bob said, you can hire outside people. Um, they're really expensive. They do break a different perspective, but they also don't know the inner workings of the background of the district at the same time.
So like, as we're working towards, um, helping our, helping our students be computer literate and AI literate, that might need to be one of the things that we're, you know, where our students are being prepared for the future. Well, how do we do that? Part of it ends up being some of the stuff that we do with AI potentially, some of that. There's a bunch of pieces I can go into.
This is something we're looking to do at like workshops and board meetings or other stuff?
That, no, it's gonna have to be done, at least a good chunk of the work is gonna have to be done during workshops and board meetings. We may have to have an additional meeting at times in order to get this stuff coming.
At the retreat, you could lay out what is, what, how do you want it to get, how we want it to be accomplished?
Yep.
Back it out. Do we make this strategic plan or should staff be making, or should we be doing a?
I think it needs to be, it, it needs to be every, all of it up.
Everybody.
Okay, because we, we need to put on the board, we have, and we also need, you know, line from the staff. So it's not a snap your fingers and create it because, you know, we could probably get a, we could probably get one written up by Friday, but that's not necessarily how we want to do it.
How is the community?
So with that, again, you can have community listening sessions, you know, especially as we started looking at reorganizing. So all of this might kind of work together all at the same time.
You can also do a community survey on what they call designer daily experiences of your children's school as part of the community listening sessions as well. So there's multiple avenues of giving community feedback as well.
What was that stuff that we did?
World Cafe?
No, no, oh, yeah, the World Cafe, we've got feedback from that, but the, uh, program where people and pregnant and.
I had a superintendent too.
Yeah, um.
I actually contacted MSBA because I think they did a strategic plan workshop or they offered that. Did you contact them?
I, I got the information, but I didn't give, I didn't talk without direct.
Yeah, so I mean, it's not cheap. Um, you know, they said it depends, like, if you're willing to blow it up and rework it from scratch, or if we're just looking to revise what we have and rebuilding the mission, vision and, um, and, uh, I asked about the community outrage and I said to them that we had done that with our superintendent's search, you know, with that data still be valid. And she said, no, that they would actually ask very different questions and they would actually already be updated. Those questions would be included, but it would be a different set of questions. I asked, you know, for fun, how much? And, um, they couldn't give a specific cost because it depends exactly what you are having done. Um, but it's around $22,000 on average.
The ones that I've seen were altered.
When's the last time this was done, you know?
Like, good, well, I honestly couldn't find one. I mean, as far as final was actually.
Well, we redid the mission, right?
We talked about it, but it was never.
We never put anything.
We redid it. No, we talked about it, but this one was a five-year plan that started, wasn't it 2018 when we had the referendum? And then so it expired in 23.
Yeah.
So it expired in 23, yeah. So I'm pretty sure it was part of the, the referendum that we had. So it's, so it is, it's expired. It's time.
I think, I think some more measurable goals should be, should be included.
There, there was a document attached to this that is of.
A lot of different.
Okay, so they're.
Yeah, different layers.
It is in our, yeah, I found it too. Like, it has like percentage of kids that you want to like read reading rules, like it, it's.
Yeah, that's the stuff that's included in what Emily's talking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's all under, that's one of like the five areas under the CACR, and they've actually replaced it. So that would've been under what used to be called Read Well by Third Grade, which actually does not exist anymore. Um, that has been sunsetted and actually is, as it should be, focused on all kids read at grade level, not just read well by third grade. So, um, that's part of CACR as well. I have to look at the all different directions, but those are your specific and measurable goals.
That'd be a good thing, though, that workshop to be extended, since we'll have all the players. They're being engaged.
Yeah, because even if we can just identify, again, three or four primary pieces, you know, that you want to focus on, and again, they can change. It's just that way if we've got something that we're working towards, that part of it can switch.
Look at the CACR, at the local literacy plan. Those are all things that are submitted, um, yearly to the state.
Are those things that you could share with us, like?
I have the CACR. The local literacy plan, um, was just submitted and that's like the data fills that it has us to, and then people, like, I pulled all the interventions together for it. Um, I have my draft. It gets submitted in something they call the Elcomer form, and I am with, and by then, yes, I'll have it. Because you get your actual copy of it like two weeks later, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Because it's in this platform that they use called Elcomer, so.
I, I guess I'm in a, in a form that would be understandable to.
I did.
So who don't know?
You can, you can go on the website and see last year's, and they, we are not allowed to make a parent-friendly version anymore, which was interesting this year from MGE, because we asked that in our question. They're like, okay, so we, it's a new format, the app, they made it quite a bit longer. The local literacy plan, they're like, okay, then I can make it into my parent-friendly version. Because no parent just wants to read my 25-page submission that I had to like download from MGE, and they're like, you can't do that anymore. So we might just not call it that, and we'll have like a cheat sheet of it. We'll do both, but I can do both. But the last year's is already on our website.
So I think it would be helpful for all of us to read that before it comes in that retreat, so we know what we're talking about.
And we have the last couple of World's Best Workforce read, and then you can read the CACR.
So someone send that to a couple of us?
My wife?
Uh, me.
No.
I think it's nice to start thinking about what a survey, because even our World Cafe data, that might be outdated.
You actually, yeah, all the data from a data science standpoint is outdated. I would say if you can't use any of it, then we can use it.
Those were.
It's also not why you were gathering it, so.
Right.
Share it in front of.
Yeah. It was a net full of people every time.
Very similar net full.
Yes, every time.
And then you want it ready and available for community events as well, because like, yeah, you can send it out, but you can also be like, oh, we're at Open House, let's have QR codes to fill it out. Where, where city days, let's have QR codes to fill it out. So you get just, you get the people that follow our emails, check our emails, but also in the event spaces as well.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Could we be at the concerts in the park?
I'm just saying, you know, there are so many, I think, um, the data is only as good as the size of the set, the set. And if it's, you know, we have like 1,200 kids, a lot of parents, and we're talking about 130 people, I don't think that's super representative of our district.
Agreed.
So.
Well, we have something with the newsletter, like, where the QR code is.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's good.
You just have to get it, just, it's getting it, what do we talk about in July, getting it made, what questions to ask, a reason, a consultant to help follow that as well. So it's answering all those questions first. Yeah, then there's all the avenues of how do we get that out to get the most. Because you want, 40% would actually be fantastic. It's super hard to even get 40% back on the survey.
25 or 20.
That was like, but we won't get to, yeah, so like 25 is considered great on the survey.
So, World Courts.
Any other discussion on this strategic plan? I just hope we're not spending 20 to 30,000 dollars to hire somebody, which we're gonna do ourselves. And I'm a believer of we work together and then staff develops something to bring back to the board to look at. There's not the board's responsibility to draft language for the strategic planning or mission statements.
There is a ton of information on MGSA, one sec, to, to get some ideas.
Yeah, the only thing, other thing I'll say, mission statements should be short and to the point. Strategic planning should be a little longer, but also to the point. Not where somebody after a while just gets tired of reading it.
Yep.
And I think for us as a board, if the district has a very concrete strategic plan, and the decisions have to be made, we ask ourselves, how does this, the plan?
For budgets?
Everything.
Good deal. All right, other topics?
Are we getting close to doing a superintendent evaluation, and what is that going to look like, and when are we doing?
Good question, I have to talk about.
You're going to. I feel like it's usually around now that it.
Right.
How much should it be? What's that process was open for?
My guess is it's not going to be able to pull it off in June.
Nope.
And I'm sitting as we're doing the workshop, and we're on meeting in July, realistically, it's probably going to be August.
Well, my question is how are we going to do it? That's a big question, you can pay MSBA to come through, I called them, I spoke that too. Um, you know, they can help lead that evaluation for thirteen hundred ninety-five dollars.
I think what we should do is review from the last time.
Yeah.
And would it be okay for to do that also at the board retreat, at the board retreat?
Yeah.
Because at that one.
We get the goals that, that we came up with. And so are we going to do like a rubrics, or are we going to do a?
Well, let's talk.
That can be a great one, I mean, that's, yep.
But I think some of the, some of the, what we pulled that from was our workshop. We pulled those off of, and they dumped MSBA, and there were rubrics, and then we've attached to that, right, and use.
So who would have that information to send to, like, Jeremy and I, and I haven't seen those goals?
I've got it somewhere.
Yeah.
So public statement was, that's the stronger factor, I think, the second meeting in December, the public statement, the public.
But I think.
Didn't have much detail. Yeah, that, they need to see what we looked at.
Yep.
That's absurd, but yeah.
Well, we have a lot, we have to get that off the boards and.
Maybe we could, um.
And that's closed session, right?
That is one way, yeah, for the actual evaluation, it's whole session, but then you have to reopen the session, have a, somebody to come, yeah, somebody, yeah.
Would Lisa Stender have a copy of that?
She might.
Or Kelsey?
Kelsey would.
In the top.
Kelsey has.
Is that, it would be helpful, I think, for that document to get sent out to everybody, and that might be the most efficient way to do it.
Yeah. We did a very abbreviated one, because Lieutenant Joshik was only on, on, on board for five months or so before we did it. So we talked about doing a more depth one for the final, or the annual, I should say.
Yep.
All right, any other?
One other question, it might be quick, you might be able to answer, but it has to do with, um, it's been a while since it was brought up, like our gifted and talented program. If we are offering it, if we have it or not, or what we use some funding to get for it for. And that's meant to be tonight, but.
No, um, no, so our gifted and talented actually runs through GCD, so Brian Cashman is actually the gifted and talented coordinator through the Edge district. Um, we have enriched classes in math, like we have different parts of it, but we have a true gifted and talented program. Yeah. We have advanced placement, we have dual enrollment, we have enriched math pathways, so that's how you get all the way to AP Kelpin, those different things like that, so.
And does that fulfill like the statute of him?
Yeah, it does. And then, um, I have.
So that money pays Brian or?
I have to, would have to ask Lisa that, because that doesn't go, like, that doesn't fall into like when I, any of my finances with the district financials that I manage. So I'd have to look with Lisa how that goes. Um, I, I think I know in the past that it does, but I don't want to be wrong, but like, I think it has gone for some additional support fee that you get for teaching dual enrollment, concurrent classes, different things like that. Um, so we would just need the breakdown from Lisa exactly how that funding goes. So.
So that's, that's above and beyond our normal funding, right? It's a categorical funding, it used to be fourteen dollars for people, even, and then, I don't remember if that's still.
Yeah.
Fourteen dollars.
I might pay for those enriched course costs as well, because some of those courses are costs with them as well for like the video of them or something, or things like that, so.
So that money is not, it, uh, it doesn't sound like it's spent on younger grades necessarily? Most of it's spent when you're talking about enriched and AP? That's what I'm wondering if it met the criteria for offering the talented.
Okay. No, for younger grades, because you usually handle that within like the classroom, um, because I know teachers are like, okay, there, we talk about, okay, they don't need to do this math unit, for example, because let's test them out, what are they doing instead? Let's do a practical-based learning, um, with them instead. And so a lot of that is handled like within the classroom in different ways as well, just because we don't have a separate pullout gifted and talented program at elementary.
So do you know where does Brian do, then for just our general population, through GCD?
Um, some examples of that, we have the situation at Twin Bluff, is so, um, this falls under the gifted and talented umbrella. Um, so we have, um, a student who is, if you truly get, if you're very much gifted and talented, and you want to like, let's say, excel in a grade, right? So you go over a grade, you actually have to be formally evaluated by per MTE statute. Um, and then he helps manages that process as well, because the formal evaluation we had, we have one, we haven't had one in a while as well, where they set all the requirements to, it's grade acceleration, essentially, like essentially you skip a grade, right? And so, um, manage that as well, so we have questions like that that go to Brian. It's one of his many hats that he wears, because he's also the E L four to care for, um, for the district as well.
And it's just the Perkins Grants.
Perkins Grant, CTE, he's there, DAP.
Fifty hats on that kid. Gentleman, I guess, now he's still.
All right, anything else on other topics? All right. Uh, next up, upcoming meetings. I've got the twenty-third. Twenty-third will be the next, uh, that'll be the regular board meeting. Uh, any upcoming events, anything that anyone wants to, we have to, you know, want to check with your agenda meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Juneteenth?
Juneteenth to nineteenth.
Nineteenth. Um, okay. There's a basketball tournament, a free and free tournament that starts at like eleven, you think?
But yeah, Thursday.
Yeah, it's next Thursday.
It's next week.
We've got a bunch of students or all students, former students, running state track.
There's seven, seven, I believe, or, state, we have, we don't have one golfer. We have golfer golf today.
All right. Johnson, what's your person, Haley?
Haley.
Haley, excuse me. The one in the section.
Okay, um, the Juneteenth stuff, so there's a basketball tournament, okay, from eleven to two. There will be a kids' history talk with students from ESU from one-thirty to two-thirty, and the main event at the Band Shell from three to seven, with live music, free food, and a bunch of games and vendors.
Is the history talk, is that starting?
I think they meet at the Band Shell, go up from there. Because it's downtown.
So then the twenty-third is our final budget meeting for Hackbode?
Yes, we have to have our.
So all of this, like, line of stuff will be given to us before?
Yep.
You know?
But, well, typically we go off to Wednesday before.
How do you tell this?
Then it's basically your funds, so it's really not more extensive than, you know, up there.
Well, if you're looking for more, but that's not what we do. Yeah, I guess just maybe, well, if you want to do a financing before.
Once we adjourn, I'd like to, there's a few to see what we can.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm here for every party, let's do it.
All right. Well, with that, if there's any other top, any other discussion on upcoming meetings or anything? All right, I want to motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bryant.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant, so go ahead. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor of adjourned? Aye, aye. A whole, making adjourned.